So cool. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Hellman.
Ms. Snell, Ms. Metoyer.
Here.
Ms. Flure.
Here.
Mr. Davenport. Ms. Franco.
Here.
Ms. Black. Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
I don't have any cards and I don't see anyone who wants to speak to the items in closed session, so we will adjourn to closed session to reconvene at 6:00.
We adjourn.
We are...
Recessing.
Recessing. We're going to go into closed session and then come back. Actually, I want to do it one last. Excuse me. We'd like to get our meeting going so that we can honor all the wonderful people that are here tonight. Thank you so much. As you can tell, I'm not Vicky Snell. So if I make mistakes, that's my disclaimer for tonight. We would like to start with a moment of reflection and a pledge of allegiance given by Alexandra from Early College High School.
Victoria Henry Hart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Was that Mrs. Flure?
Yes.
It was moved by Mrs. Flure, seconded by Mrs. Black. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's been moved, it's been approved.
Move adoption of the minutes of 5:08:18 and 5:14:18.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Flure and seconded by Mrs. Black. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been approved. And now I get to call up Mrs. Clark, Kristen Clark, for our Superstars.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so now I have to improvise on my speech. Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Navarro. Through the Superstar Award Program, the Board of Education has shown its continued commitment to recognizing employee excellence. This evening, we are recognizing a group of exceptional individuals who inspire and nurture our students every day. Assisting the Board tonight are Personnel Commissioners Susan Meyer, Ken Wayman, and Tris Ailey. Dale Ellis, Jake Haley, and Candy Borella will be introducing our superstar recipients. And so at this time, I'd like to invite a Board member and Commissioner to come forward to help hand out the awards. Superstars, when you hear your name called, please come forward to receive your well-deserved
Nominated by immensely appreciative parent, this selfless Davis Elementary School superstar helped transform the lives of an entire family. Within a week, this student's entire demeanor had changed and immeasurable improvement followed throughout the school year. Aiding and instructing the parents was an integral part of this student and family's transformation, with her relentless drive and motivation ensuring all had the abilities and knowledge to succeed and thrive. Whether writing grant proposals to secure consequential extras for the classroom or organizing parents to participate in fundraising walks, this dedicated, thoughtful, generous, compassionate, and tireless educator is more than deserving of this award and recognition. Congratulations, Special Education Preschool Teacher Kelly Adams.
to be the face and voice of Newport Mesa Unified School District. Responsible for a multitude of tasks and frequently challenging situations, her unflappable disposition is invaluable as she works with the public and staff on many different levels and a wide variety of circumstances. Possessing an uncanny ability to anticipate the next step of any situation, she quietly and modestly provides an immensely positive impact on her coworkers and indeed on how the district itself is perceived. Congratulations, Receptionist Kira Brogdon.
With a humble, kind, and calm manner combined with an exceptional work ethic, this Whittier Elementary School superstar has an immensely positive impact on her school community. Despite a substantial workload, she is persistently thorough, provides TLC when needed, ensures the students feel comforted and cherished. She supplies her office with backup clothing and personal items for students in need at her own expense and never hesitates to assist with regular office duties whenever there is a need. With a positive attitude that is contagious, this reliable, caring, diligent, and kind employee quietly but dramatically improves the workplace for all on a daily basis. Congratulations, Health Assistant Saran Chenleisen.
Elementary. Kind and energetic, with a student-first philosophy, she has gone far beyond her job description, including writing a grant proposal to redesign and furnish the employee lounge and front office. Prioritizing and emphasizing an attractive school environment both aesthetically and functionally, her influence in team building has been exceptional. Her relationship building with students has been genuine and noteworthy, and her impact has been immediate and acclaimed. Congratulations, School Administrative Assistant, Victoria Elementary School Judy Chimmets.
now used by all grades seven Language Arts classes at Ensign Intermediate School, this superstar has had a profound impact on students and coworkers alike. Driven, analytical, insightful, dependable, and multi-talented, this teacher has deservedly earned the reputation for being one of Ensign's most valued instructors. From compelling unit introductions to Socratic seminars to personal and group reflection and much more, this teacher's hard work and masterful execution in the classroom have driven Ensign's students to excel. Congratulations, English Teacher, Common Core Coach Christine Cross.
a feeling of importance, safety, and comfort. She gives each child her full attention, is adept at quickly recognizing when issues arise with students, and is held in high esteem by both current and former students who frequently stop by to just say hello. Highly organized and always prepared, the health office is always well-stocked with all the essentials and more. She has built remarkably positive and caring relationships with students, families, and staff, and indeed is the heart of the Kelly Brook Elementary School community. Congratulations, Health Assistant Sonia Prescott.
As the go-to person on the Costa Mesa High School campus, this superstar epitomizes an effective, efficient, capable, skillful, and authoritative conductor of the Costa Mesa Express. With a ceaseless stream of highly varied and challenging tasks throughout every day, this virtuoso employs a diversified approach, instantly reads situations and appropriately assists, directs, or converses until a positive outcome is achieved with care, confidence, and confidentiality. In addition, she provides personal, sensitive, and caring service and guidance to every student who walks through the door. With an uncanny ability to find a solution and a genuine desire to assist, she is an invaluable asset and highly deserving of this commendation. Congratulations, School Administrative Assistant, Costa Mesa High School Gloria Rios.
Coordinator of the Project Kids Connect program at Whittier and Adams Elementary, this superstar is responsible for the training and implementation of the after-school program for 175-plus students from dismissal time until 6:00 p.m. every day of the school year. She expertly guides and supports a team of nine instructional assistants in everything from classroom behavior techniques to enrichment activities while managing a safe and productive environment for students. Her creative and enriching activities are respectful of children, and she has encouraged student leadership through a student council and being attentive to student suggestions and ideas. A collaborative and motivated leader, the program has grown and improved tremendously under her brilliant supervision. Congratulations, Lead Instructional Assistant, Extended-Day Program Maria Santana-Baisa.
continually pulled in many directions, with changes to her schedule required minute by minute. With energy and devotion to her work that cannot be matched, she never says no when there's a request for help and always finds a way to provide assistance. All you have to tell her is there's a kiddo in need and she'll be there. Despite this enormous challenge that includes special and general education students, often intense and emotional situations, she is invariably calm, helpful, creative, student-centered, hands-on, driven, effective, and an exemplary role model. Congratulations, Inclusion Specialist Claudine Stapp.
workload with humor, positivity, and proactive attitude. Despite the packed schedule, she never hesitates to take on new responsibilities, such as joining the PBIS team and launching the Sea Kings Unified Sports Program at Corona Del Mar High School, in which general education and special education students compete with other high schools in a unified sports league. The Unified Sports Program has been a vast and complicated venture, but the joy and inclusion it brings for all students has been immeasurable. A team player, avid collaborator, and strong advocate for students, this sincere, thoughtful, and compassionate superstar is a treasured member of the Corona Del Mar School community. Congratulations, School Psychologist Anne Marie Stellman.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank our superstar nominating committee because they're dedicated every single year to come in and spend several hours going through the numerous nominations we get. This year, we had over 70.
Wow.
So I just want to thank them for their time and also wanted to congratulate our newest employee superstar. So thank you for your time.
We're going to break for a reception, but before we leave, I'd like to thank all of the families and supporters of our superstars that are here tonight. Thank you for sharing these superstars with the kids at Newport Mesa. Everyone appreciates it. Now, and then we'll have a 10, yeah. Give big round of applause for them. And now we'll break for 10 minutes, so at 6:30, Board members, we're back in place. Thank you for sharing. Let's bring our meeting back to order. I've never had... I should have a glass. My microphone's louder than this one. Okay. At this time, we would like to hear from our representatives from our high schools with our student board reports, starting with Alex from Early College High School.
Hi, as you said, I'm Alex from Early College High School. Over the last two weeks, we were actually notified that we earned our sixth-year WASC accreditation. It was very exciting to do all that, have our students interact with the WASC members, and it was a lot of fun overall. So I hope they enjoyed it as much as we did, being able to give them tours and answer all the questions they would ask us. We were also identified as a California Honored Role High School, and we were ranked by the U.S. News and World Report as the top-performing high school in America.
Yay. Great.
Last Monday and Tuesday, all our seniors successfully gave their senior project presentations as the gear up for graduation on May 31st. Last Thursday, we held our annual awards night that was attended by several of you. Here tonight, in which we recognized over 100 students for their excellence in academics, character, and community service. That was a fun night for all of us there.
Especially for you.
Especially for me, but...
Just an interruption. Alex got how many scholarships?
Oh. She paid for her first year.
Yeah. She was definitely the big winner at this awards night.
College finals are coming up for us Wednesday and Thursday, while our high school courses are actually next week, so finals for next week. Unfortunately for the seniors, we get this whole week of finals for high school and college, so we got to study hard for this week. The biggest upcoming event that we actually have is graduation, which is next week on Thursday, that will happen at 3:30 at Orange Coast College Rubber B More Theater. So I hope to see you guys there.
We'll be there.
And last but not least, we are proud of our class of 2018, as half of our class will be attending either a UC, a Cal State, or a private university. This fall, 43% of our class earned a non-weighted Communal Academic GPA of a 3.5 or higher, while 11% of our soon-to-be graduates earned a perfect 4.0 GPA in all of their college courses they've taken throughout ECHS. And unfortunately, which is sad to say, this will be our last board report of the school year. It was a pleasure to share our experience with you guys and hope next year whoever represents our school will represent it really well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
But you can always come back. Come back and visit.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Navarro. I'm Rachel Kirkorian, representing Costa Mesa High School. So in a brief academic update, we are super excited to announce that our solar boat team just placed first place this past weekend in the rookie division and fourth place overall out of 38 boats. This was Mesa's first competition of this kind, and we're very proud to say that we were one of the top boats amongst the veterans. The crew was amazing and never complained once about having to haul a 225-pound boat around. Look out, Nautica World, CMHS is coming for you. And a brief athletic update, our CIF softball team played again today, and it looks like we're moving on again. And so we're super excited about that. So let's see, last night, our seniors set up a huge poster in the quad, and it was to announce the last 30 days of high school, and it's a clock that will change every day, and it's the size of our whole library on the outside, so students can take pictures at lunch and enjoy that. And we are so excited. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rachel.
Good evening, Board. I'm Max Johnson, representing Corona Del Mar High School. So first off, we had Challenge Success meet with our teachers in March to discuss the school culture and climate. And they also returned Monday to meet with a group of students to improve the culture and climate as well and all the academic pressure facing CDM students. And this program will be continuing in the fall, and more discussions are coming with that. And yesterday, we had the Sea King Pride Award on our campus, and Ms. Yelsey was there, so thank you for coming. And what else? Sorry, it's like small on my phone. We also won boys volleyball, won CIF Southern Section Champions, so they're really excited, and they're continuing on state and possibly playing Newport Harbor on Saturday and are playing tonight at 7:00. So none of us will be there, but they'll be playing. Boys golf won CIF championship a couple, like last week, I believe, so we're all proud of them. And finally, boys baseball lost today against the number-one seed in second place CIF, or second-round CIF, so they're fourth place. But also, on Friday, we had a lockdown drill, which was scenario-based, and that was with a homeless man coming on campus, and it was extremely successful lockdown drill where all the safety precautions were met and everything, so I heard from our administration. And finally, we just finished AP exams on campus, so we're all excited about that. And the makeup tests are tomorrow for those that are finishing up, so those are over. Lastly, prom. Prom is on June 2nd, so ASP is getting ready, and we're super excited for that. This is our first prom we've ever completely planned in-house, so we're doing all of the preparations on our own, and we're excited to see how that goes. And not finally, but we have two more things. HRC is hosting Be Kind to Your Mind Week to just de-stress after APs and upcoming FER finals. So it's so far been a great week with a video presentation each day on our Trident TV. And also, last week, Trident Hosted, which is our magazine and live TV show on campus, hosted a Friendship Week. So it was a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
My name is Jordan Richardson, and I'm here representing Newport Harbor High School. We just finished AP and IB testing. We started selling prom tickets this week, and last week, it's going to be at the Yoast Theater this year, and we're starting it at $70 with an ASP card and $75 without. Our 24th Annual Evening of the Arts is tomorrow night at 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We're having visual displays of just art from drawing, painting, ceramics, crafts, photography, digital art, and culinary. On May 24th, we're having Duke, Georgetown, Harvard, Penn, and Stanford conduct a brief presentation, just to kind of like encourage students. We're having our Last Dance Show of the year, where a dance team performs. Dance 1, 2, 3, Color Guard, and Song are also performing. It's a show, and it's $10 for students and $15 for adults, and that's on May 31st. And we're having our show, which is actually happening right now. It's Mr. Newport. It's pretty much like a comedic pageant. So yeah, that's happening right now. And for athletics, we went against CDM for the CIF finals and lost, but we gave it our all, and we were all there to support, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. I saw a van. Are you here somewhere? Oh, no, he had to leave. He had to leave? Okay. Well, thank you. It's exciting. I'd like to say, we're entering smile season, so all sorts of good stuff is happening everywhere. Our next report is Harbor Council PTA, Vicky Waldo.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Navarro, directors, and guests. We at Harbor Council are very busy planning for our June Harbor Council meeting, our last meeting of the year. We're calling it the Spectacular Join-In. We are planning a session that we learned from state convention called Power Up Your Board to help train presidents and new executive boards coming in. We're also doing a membership workshop with emphasis on the limitations of events being permitted by our PTA insurance, as well as ideas on full-year membership drives for next year. And we've done something different. Instead of just having our PTA presidents, we've also invited up to four guests of theirs from their incoming executive boards to help familiarize them with Harbor Council and things that we do. Traditionally, our June meeting has rather low attendance, but this special meeting so far, we have had 68 officers RSVP-ing to our meetings that we usually have 25 to 28 at. So we're going to have a nice crowd. We're really excited about it. We have been establishing a task force to plan and organize the parent education meetings for next year. We're going to be presenting a variety of speakers to the parent community on tough subjects that they are faced with today. To date, we've had representation from parent leaders from each of the four zones, from both lower and upper grades, and our goal for this task force was to have eight, two from each zone. And it's been kind of a great idea because we now have 15 members of this task force. As soon as we had eight, I started having people actually call me and say, you know, I really want my program chairman to come also. I really want my EVP member to come also, because they've got some great ideas. So it just shows us that the parent community is really ready for this, and they're excited about it, and they want to say what we're going to speak about. So we're very excited. Unfortunately, we did get the results back from National PTA Reflections Program, and our state winner did not go on to win national, but you know, what an honor still to be a state winner.
Yes.
So we were hoping that next year, we can have another one for a state winner. So we were hoping that next year, we can have another one for a state winner. We're working rapidly on the Reflections Programs already with training out there, et cetera, so that the kids can get started this summer and have their entries in early in the year. We did hold our Membership Challenge earlier this year for new memberships, and one of the winners of our Membership Challenge was awarded a high school that had 20% increase in their PTA memberships. That was won by Early College High. And last week, they did present a $500 scholarship on behalf of Harbor Council to Michaela Schwalbe, and it was presented by Dr. Martinez. And many of our PTAs actually do sponsor scholarships for high school seniors, both the high schools do and some of the elementary schools do as well. And the next board meeting will be on June 12th. It's my daughter's birthday, so Cynthia Strassman will be here to give the Harbor Council report, and it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Vicky. Dr. Baromastermeister, we have a report from the City of Newport Beach Youth Council Program.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, Cabinet, and distinguished guests, we are recognizing the City of Newport Beach Youth Council. Tonight, the council is committed to representing the voice and viewpoint of teens while striving to benefit the quality of life in Newport Beach by creating experiences that connect teens to their community. Youth Council meets monthly to address a variety of issues that face teens in the Newport Beach community. And at this time, I'd like to call up Amanda Mahaffey from the Newport Beach Youth Council.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Amanda Mahaffey, from the City of Newport Beach. I just wanted to thank you for your support and your time for this year's Mayor's Youth Council and Council of Youth Ambassadors. I'm going to bring up Marbella Marlo and Asher Green. They're going to do a little presentation and tell you a little bit about our programs and their experiences this year. Let's see. Where do you go to start it?
Good evening, Board. My name is Marbella Marlo, and I've had the privilege on being on the Executive Board of Mayor's Youth Council and one of the founders of the Council of Youth Ambassadors.
And my name is Asher Green. I am the Vice President of the Council of Youth Ambassadors. So with Mayor's Youth Council, we have a few goals in mind. First and foremost is to provide a line of communication between the youth of Newport Beach and the city staff. We also strive to provide a way for youth to organize events and activities, and promote youth involvement and interest in community affairs.
So at Mayor's Youth Council, we've had the privilege of volunteering at special events, such as our city-organized kind of events to get all the youth involved, including the little kids, environmental projects like beach cleanups, and we've had many guest speakers come and talk about their organizations, like the Surf Rider Foundation. And then one of my favorite events is Youth Government Day, which usually happens in November, and we get to kind of shadow one of the city staff members or city council members, and then at the end of the day, we do a mock city council meeting, and it's really interesting to learn about how our government works.
One of our most prominent community service activities was the Mayor's Youth Council collected and organized and donated non-perishable foods and toys to Miracles for Kids.
That's nice.
So last year, at around this time, I had the idea of creating the Council of Youth Ambassadors while I was talking with some friends about Mayor's Youth Council and what we wish it included. And after a year, the other 11 members of Council of Youth Ambassador and I have had the privilege of being able to have one-on-one internships with city staff members, and we get to be able to shadow them like two times a month usually, and I've had the privilege of shadowing the Deputy Community Development Director, Jim Campbell. And in this internship, I learned all the aspects of the community development projects, and the financial, political, and diplomatic aspects of them.
So as Marbella just said, in the Council of Youth Ambassadors, we get one-on-one internships with city staff. I interned with Makina Nova, who is one of the city planners for Newport Beach. This allowed me to both learn what her job entailed and get real-world experience by helping her. We also, at some of our meetings, get guest visits, sorry, guest visits from city council members. We do community outreach. We've posted flyers around school and around the community that promote applying to register to vote, as you can now do that preregister if you turn 16. And we also provide a forum where students can voice their ideas, both for events for the Council of Youth Ambassadors and for Mayor's Youth Council.
And so we'd like to thank all the NSD Board members, especially Karen Yelsey and Charlene Matoir, the Newport Beach city staff officials and city staff, and then especially Miracles for Kids for being such an amazing partnership to work with. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Amanda and Brayson and all the students involved in these programs. The Mayor's Youth Council is one big group, as I explained, and it's great to see all the community service and the projects they get involved with. But starting this ambassadors program was really very unique, and I think it gives these students a real opportunity to see what city government is like, because they're there throughout the year. So congratulations to all of you, and good luck to all of them in the future. I hope you come back in this community and serve us as well, because you'd be great ambassadors for the area. Thank you.
And thank you for giving us such a good report. It really explains it to everyone. Some of these committees that we talk about, and hearing it from you guys is way better than hearing it from us. So, thank you. And now we have Dr. Jockham.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much. So you know when you send staff to professional development opportunities and training, and I know even when the Board attends different training opportunities, you come back very jazzed and very excited and ready to implement everything and move forward. Well, a few years ago, we sent our special education coordinators to some professional development, and they got very excited about moving in the direction of inclusive practices in the district, and specifically into moving into learning centers. And they really took this on themselves to do a lot of the research, find out what was going on in other districts, to do visits, to find out, and to help us start spreading that message within the district, and to convincing folks that this is the direction we needed to move in. So I am pleased to call up one of our special education coordinators, Carrie Adams, and she's going to talk to you about our inclusive practices, and specifically the learning centers.
All right, Board, Dr. Navarro, Executive Cabinet, thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to talk about this. As Sarah said, we came back very enthusiastic after a professional development, and in the last few years, we've really had an opportunity to work with so many people, gen ed, special ed, to really make this start happening for our school district. So I'm very excited to talk about it tonight. All right, so when we looked at beginning, we needed to start somewhere, and we really wanted to have a foundation for our research, and we thought that was the most important part. I'm not going to bore you with the pages and pages and pages, and I want to give a little shout-out to Audrey Gomez from Chapman University, who really helped us synthesize the research and get what was really good out there and good information. But the overarching message that came out of all of the research that you see in the past 40 to 50 years about being inclusive is this kind of statement here, and that's that students with disabilities achieve more when they're educated in the general education setting alongside their peers without disabilities. So I always like to start our presentation with that, so you know our driving force. Newport Mesa, we've been able to do quite a few things, and we're in a lot of beginning stages, but the primary focus of today will be the learning centers. But in addition, I did want to let you know of other things we're doing, including co-teaching, co-planning, increased access to all general education, whether it's within the classroom, whether it's specials, whether it's programs, clubs. It was really wonderful to hear what CDM has going on, so that's increased. Push-in support, just meaning where we're taking our special education services and doing it in general education instead of continuing to remove students. And then just the use of assistive technology. And this is nothing new. You guys have really supported the use of technology, and just that ability to have access to computers to so many students and moving to one-to-one has made servicing special education students much easier. So let's talk about actual learning centers defined, and I have four schools listed up here, because these were our primary focus. When we looked at learning centers and where they were going throughout California and the different definitions, we really knew that we needed to do it the Newport Mesa way, and how are we going to define that, and what is our focus going to be. With the learning center model, we also primarily focused on how we can service our mild-moderate students first, so our students with those mild-moderate disabilities. Traditionally, you're talking about a student that's cognitively average but has some kind of learning processing difficulty that makes them learn differently. So that was our primary focus with the learning center model, and so we have four school sites that for the past many, many years had what was called a special day class, and they service mild-to-moderate students. The teachers in those classrooms were credentialed in the same way that every mild-moderate teacher is credentialed, and there's at least one teacher at every school site. So when we were talking about learning center model, we said, how can we make sure that instead of sending students, you know, on a bus somewhere to learn to read, that we are not using those same credentialed individuals that are at their own school site to work with these students? And so the learning center model is this school-community approach. Where's your homeschool? Where are your friends? Where is your family? Where we all take on the education of the students for us in our own community. And it's flexible, so we want to make sure that we're optimizing that time in general education, but also recognizing that when they need that support, we're providing it appropriately, whether it's push-in, pull-out, wherever it's needed. The components of a learning center, without really reading through all of this, I just kind of want to emphasize what we looked at, and that was all of these students that were traditionally on a roster of a special-day class teacher, so a special education teacher. They would go there, that's where they put their backpack, their lunch, they often played at recess with that same group of peers. We disbanded that. We took all of those students, and with the help of all the principals, the general education teachers at each of these four sites that we'll go into, put all of those students on a roster of a gen ed teacher. They had a desk, they were a full part of that classroom, and that was our first step. How do we just get them on the roster of those classroom teachers? And then how do we pair and make instructional teams? So our general education, special ed teachers working together to support all students, which ends up benefiting students that aren't just in special education. It makes the classroom environment more conducive for all students with differences in learning. Another key part of our learning center model is getting teachers educated on universal design for learning, which I'm sure everyone hears a lot about. It's been around for a long time, but it's definitely come back in through the new frameworks, through the new standards, and making sure that there's an understanding that through universal design for learning, you can target and reach any student at any level. And then access to that core teaching instruction. When mild-to-moderate SDC classes were much more kind of all over California, and that was the focus, the specialized academic instructor was doing core instruction as opposed to the general education teacher who's credentialed in those subject areas. So we wanted to get that back into the experts of curriculum and have the special ed teachers more the expert of how then do you reach the students? You know the content, I know how to deliver it to students with unique learning styles. Then targeted intervention. So if you still, just pushing you into a gen ed class doesn't mean that you're going to make gains. How are we then going to target your learning and make sure that you're still making gains in reading and math? And then just to be clear, we have four different schools that are currently in the learning center model. Each one is going to be unique to its community, to its staff, to its student population. So while we have some components, they're still all going to look slightly different. Again, this learning center model is consistent with everything we're hearing about right now, with MTSS, with the curricular frameworks, and that's that students through universal design can learn in the general education setting. Part of our passion, and part of the reason that we wanted to move forward with learning centers and inclusion and getting these practices more in Newport Mesa, there's a lot of need for change. There's so many reasons out there that all districts are looking at this, and while we're real passionate, it's not just us, all of California in general. If you look at inclusion across the United States, California definitely is not where we should be. So across California, these are the reasons that a lot of people are making this change. And the first is federal law has been around for a long time about least restrictive environment, and that's really, we need to focus more on what that means. What is the least restrictive environment? And when we don't have it, how do we recreate it for? Part of what we looked at was our own test results, and I'll show those in just a second and kind of go over those a little quickly, but when we look at our assessments and then we take out special education, we can see that the programs we had previously just weren't working. They weren't where we could be. And then student segregation, and that's really a big part of the community of advocates for children with disabilities, is the idea of segregation. We've ended segregation for many years now, and it needs to be for all people, including those with disabilities. And part of what, because we created specialized programs for each zone, we truly were removing students from their homeschool to be taught by a teacher that we very well had at the same site. So it's just getting more creative with how we can reach all of the students, no matter their level. And then making sure that instead of putting children in classrooms without typical peers, that we're really thoughtful in when that needs to happen and why, and then how we increase and make sure that their access to typical peers to the extent possible. We also get a CDE annual report, and I'll be excited to share some of that, because in 2014, we were needing, had some areas that we needed some growth in, and through the direction of Maureen Cottrell, we were able to do a couple of different things, including increasing our inclusive practices that we've now met some of these standards, so that's exciting to report. And then I already talked about transportation, and then the final piece is that due process litigation. Often, litigation revolves around access to typical peers, so we wanted to, that's important to us, and it's important to families, so we wanted to make sure we're all on that same page. So here is just a quick overview. This is the ELA, and if you notice the top, that's students without disabilities, the bottom is students with disabilities. And so in looking at this data, we felt we need to get, we need to focus on this. This is an important area, where what we're doing currently isn't getting our students with disabilities where they need to be to meet the standards. So this one is ELA, and this one is math, and these are both from 2016, which is when we were really starting the process of moving to more inclusive practices. I'm going to touch really quickly, just cut me off if I'm going too long, Sarah, on two of the biggest research projects that really kind of helped us guide schools and talk to people about why this works and why it's okay, and kind of dispelled some fears. The first is SWIFT. SWIFT did three transformed schools, where they started to include all students, no matter the disability, in with the general education peers. And a lot of concerns or worries is how that will affect gen ed students and how that will affect special education students. And so the outcomes were positive, and so I'm sharing some of the graphs with you. Over the three years, you can see the red are students with IEPs, and the blue is students without IEPs. Top is reading, bottom is math. General education peers, as most of the research shows, it has little to no impact, if not positive, on their scores. And for students in IEPs, it has a very positive impact on their scores. Again, this is the same SWIFT research project with those schools, and this is their district API scores. And you can see, again, that by their third year, you see a pretty great increase for both students on and off IEPs. SEAL's research is even more interesting to me, because it's longitudinal, so it looked at students that have been in special education for multiple years, all the way through them exiting and becoming adults. And again, what the overall results were, any student that they were tracked that had more opportunity in the general education setting had higher math and reading scores overall. They also had better outcomes post-high school, more likely to have a job, hold a job, or go to college. Those that received slower-paced instruction and consistent lower standards did not as well. And then just to summarize, we looked at so much research, again, Audrey was very helpful with all her access to Chapman University. The two main things I want to take away is students on IEPs always do better, no matter which research we look. which research we looked at, and students without IEPs either did the same or better. There was never anything negative from outcome of inclusion. And a lot of these studies looked at inclusive practices of students with varying levels, all disability areas. So we have lots of this. At the end, I do have a little research bibliography that I can share with you guys if anyone needs some light reading. So to focus on the federal and state requirements, we all know that least restrictive environment is the focus and emphasis of what we're doing for students with special education and what we're mandated to do. But it's reemphasized commonly. We always get these dear colleague letters, and they go back to this least restrictive environment. And in this November 16th, 2015 one is especially, I think, important because it brings up that students that need, that are struggling in reading and math, what you do is support them in the general ed, not pull them out, and it really focuses on that. This is what I was talking about, which Maureen helped us analyze and really look at where we failed in some of these measures and how we could do better. There's basically two areas that we're looking at, and that is that students that are in some of our more moderate severe programs, that they're still having access to typical peers, to general education programs. And then students that are primarily in general education and get pulled out for other services, the state basically has set standards for what that percentage should be. And in 2014, we didn't meet one of those. So Maureen led us in a large group study on what, where are we failing? How can we do this better? Whether it's just reporting, whether it's getting out to our actual teachers and talking to them personally about, what are you doing now? That's inclusive. What are you doing now with your gen ed students? Where do you go to for recess? Where are you having your lunch? Oh, you have reading buddies that you do every Friday? That's inclusive, that's mainstream, that, those are important pieces. How then can we take that to the next level? What else can we be inclusive with? And then in addition, moving to the learning centers and really taking quite a number of classes, I think it's a total of eight classes, I think I have the numbers coming up. We actually closed the SDC classrooms, and they were in gen ed now, so very exciting. The other indicator that we're still looking at has a lot to deal with that, do with that SEAL study, and that's post-high school. What's happening to our kids on IEPs? It's a little harder to track, so we're working on, Maureen's really working on trying to see how we can track this better and really see where our students go and what happens to them, because it was another indicator in 2014 that we still needed to work on. Okay, so our learning centers. Our pilot school was Ray Elementary. Very exciting to start with Ray because they had our largest SDC mild-moderate classrooms. They had three, and they had quite a few students. They also had the traditional RSP class, so there was four special education teachers there. And we piloted it there because we had the staffing and because we just felt like that was a good place to start, they had a lot of changes going on, and it was just a good environment to start something positive and new. So we were excited to be able to start with Ray and really worked closely with them. And we went in there, we trained with the staff, we worked with them, and all three of those classrooms with students with SDC mild-moderate students were then no longer classrooms, they were learning centers. And the students were on the general education teacher's role. They had a seat, they had friends, they built relationships. And that's where we started, and we learned a lot from that. So it was really great to be able to start in one place. And then this year, move on to our other three schools that had the, previously had our mild-moderate classrooms, and that was Lincoln, New Portale, and Sonora. And I do have two people here from New Portale that I'll be pulling up in just a minute to give you just a little, their input on how it's been this year. To implement this, we did, we offered an array of professional development. Some schools took it all, some schools said, hold off, we need to go slow. Some, we came in and did small little rotations of different professional development, and some schools, we actually sent them. OCD has been really wonderful with always, every year, they have UDL and co-teaching, and special education graciously was able to support and pay for both gen ed and special ed teachers to get trained in those areas. So we also have provided some behavior management training, as that definitely wanted to be a focus for how to support our general education classrooms. And then just disability special education overview, because we understand that general education teachers through their certificate program aren't taught to be special education teachers. In addition, we did, each site did it differently, but we wanted to make sure that they planned beforehand, so it wasn't just day one. Students were now in a whole different class and unprepared. So they had planning and collaboration together with the general education teachers. Again, like I said, they were now on the roster of a general education teacher and classroom. And then when appropriate, one important thing that we found was to cluster students, and that was more for time efficiency. So students that can work well together, that can be in a classroom on a general education teacher roster, if you're, say, at Kaiser, and you have seven third-grade classrooms and you're one special education teacher, it'd be much easier to support your students and give them more time if they're clustered in one, two, or three classrooms as opposed to across all seven. So that's what I mean by cluster. And then our IEPs, as we moved this way, we continually made less and less time recommendation outside of the general education classroom. So it was really, how can we move that to an accommodation, or using the technology, or me coming into the room and either co-teaching, or running a group in the back that was flexible and allowed both general education and special education teachers, or students, to come back and get targeted instruction? And then you'll also hear from my teachers over here in just a second. But the change in curriculum actually really benefited us. Wonder Works and Bridges both have intervention, or Wonders and Bridges both have intervention components that have been really instrumental and really beneficial to making this successful. Outcome. So, really nervous that a couple weeks ago, myself and the coordinators, we went around to our different schools. The four that were doing, made the big change, and then some of our other schools that have started with inclusive practices, and we asked for feedback. And we said, tell us what's going right, tell us what's going wrong, what do you need for next year? And a sigh of relief, I have never felt so proud, it was really awesome to hear all the positive feedback, how just the general teacher input was fantastic. They really were excited, they were happy, they talked about the increased collaboration, just getting to know their special education staff, having them in the room, realizing what experts both were for each other. Overall, we started to look at report card marks. Report cards are report cards, but we didn't see that all of a sudden students were now getting only ones because they were in general education. We didn't see a change that way. They mostly stayed the same, or actually had some improvement areas. When we started to analyze the STAR reading data, we saw that overall showed positive growth. One of my favorite stories is a couple of different teachers have said the same thing about increased independence. They didn't realize that what we were doing in our mild-moderate classrooms was being a little overprotective. So they go into general ed classrooms and they've never lined up with a class of thirty before, or they've never had systems in place for working with that large of a room. And at first, it was a little shocking, like, okay, we've got to go back to basics. But by a few weeks in, what the students were able to do was pretty incredible and overwhelming me as I went to school sites, that was something that was brought to our attention. And then the higher expectations, they realized, they set the bar, and the higher they set the bar, the more the students improved. And one of the most important pieces for all our students is that improved social relationships. We saw more students playing with typical peers than with their safety net group that they were with in class all day.
That's great.
So now, I'm going to have just a few minutes for Jamie Nye. She's a specialized academic instructor, mild-moderate teacher at Newport Elementary, and Shai Castro is our second grade teacher, also at Newport Elementary, to say a few words about how it's going.
Good evening, board. My name is Shai Castro, and I'm the general education teacher. And I've had the privilege of having an SAI student in my classroom all year long. I wanted to touch more on the social-emotional aspect of the student. She is able to come into the classroom, has a smile on her face, she tells her mom she loves going to school now. She has friends and peers that she plays with every single day at recess, at lunch, at lunch recess, she sits with them when they're eating. And then as well as inside the classroom, like she touched on, there's a lot of following directions and staying on task and getting this out, and she doesn't want to fall behind. Instead, she's rising up to the occasion and able to do everything just like a typical peer is in my classroom. What surprised me the past few months, as we're using more Chromebooks and technology, she's able to log onto her Chromebook, go right to Google Classroom, get open her doc and start going without any instruction or any help from me, which is a big kudos to this student. And then I also wanted to touch on the flip side of that. All of my typical students as well have learned so much from having her in my classroom. She's no different than anyone else, they're able to help her when she needs help, they're able to do everything for, like, help her along. And they've learned, I haven't had any issues with any of my girls, and I feel like it's because they've learned that difference, the importance of, no matter if a student is different or not, we still need to go out of our way and make sure that everyone's okay, or they have someone to play with on the playground, or they're included. So I've had a super positive experience, and I wouldn't be able to imagine my year without this student in my classroom. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Being a mild-moderate special education teacher for the past 22 years, I have seen things come and go, and one thing that is for sure is that students do learn best from their peers and within the classroom. This is the time, it takes a collaboration and commitment from everybody, but with the district adoption of the new curriculum with the Bridges Intervention Program, fabulous, as well as the Wonder Works, SIPs, and the one-on-one, one-to-one Chromebooks are going forward with the commitment of the Chromebooks. It makes my job a lot easier to help collaborate with the gen ed teachers, and most importantly, those who are winning are the students. And everybody is rising to the occasion and doing a great job. So thank you for picking a great curriculum, everybody, and the commitment to all the students.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'm wrapping it up now. Just going forward, what we've done this year in addition to the learning centers, we have sent quite a few teachers to our co-teaching training, and next year, Ensign is planning to implement a couple of co-taught classes, I'm very excited about that. And Kaiser all this year has been co-teaching math in sixth grade. So that was really positive and exciting and based on their ability to go to these trainings. Again, universal design for learning, last year and this year, we've sent quite a few people to UDL and nothing but positive feedback. I highly always recommend it, especially if Katie Novak is in town to go see that. And then multiple elementary schools that I haven't kind of touched on yet but have incorporated or increased their push-in models, where Kaiser, Killebrook, Newport Heights, and Victoria, where they really thought about being strategic with when they can go into classrooms as opposed to pulling students out, and it's been some really good positive feedback there. And then we just sent Jamie and some other teachers to the Bridges Intervention Training to make sure that, so they've been using it, but now that they kind of know the material, how can we really use this for our students that are on IEPs, for students that are not, and how do we get this intervention going? So we had special education teachers join some of our general education teachers, including California, Kaiser, Newport L., Newport Coast, Ray, and Sonora. And here's my references that you guys can have later.
Look at all that great reading.
Thank you again for letting me come and talk about all the things we're doing for inclusive practices in special education, and we look forward to having even more to report every year.
I just want to commend you for, you know, because I know that sometimes when we go to conferences and workshops and we come back and everybody goes, that's great, but it'll cost too much, and you can't do this, and you can't do, so I just really applaud you, and we're grateful to have you in the district, to be the leader in that. So kudos to your staff, it was really fantastic.
And extra kudos because you did have two implementations and a new program. So, bravo.
So I just wanted to also say that, you know, this really was a collaborative effort, and, you know, we spent hours with our teachers' union leadership in terms of some of the concerns that they had heard and were brought forward, and we really wanted to address those. Parents, you know, parents have to take a leap of faith because these are parents that we convinced at some point that special day classes were the answer to their children's issues, and now we're turning around and saying, no, we really think general ed is the way to go. So our parents really, you know, embrace that. And I think as well, our principals, and our principals have just been very supportive of all kids. And I think part of that is, we're also much more collaborative at this level in ed services and student support services. We try and do things as a team rather than, oh, well, let me see where I fit into that. So I think it's just been really helpful, and we're excited about seeing what we can do moving forward. In terms of, I met last week with the state director of special education, and we were talking about how California is a very progressive state. You know, people will say, oh, California, you're on the cutting edge. Look at all of these things you do for LGBT kids, for all kinds of kids, and why are special ed kids still left behind? So I think, you know, we're looking, and as we move through our next year, we're going to come to you and we're going to ask you to be bold. And we may want to take some further steps in moving this process forward. We know you're a bold board and that you support that, so thank you.
Mrs. Yeltsin?
Yeah, I just had a question. Jamie mentioned she has just one special ed student in her room. I know some of the classrooms at these schools have a much higher number. At what point does the gen ed teacher have extra help in that room, or do they? I mean, does it?
Well, that, so as Carrie had kind of talked about, one of the things that we like to do is to be able to cluster students. So it could depend on the grade level, you know, this is the only class there that really works, or just the configuration of that school site. But we do like to cluster students, and it all depends on the student needs. There is typically extra support if students are clustered in a classroom because, remember, we kept the teachers, but we also kept the instructional assistants that were in those special day classes. So they're in those classrooms to support as well. So if it's not an extra teacher in there, there is, especially when they're clustered, there's typically some extra aid support. Is that, did I got it? Okay.
That's great.
Thank you. Wonderful report. More good stuff that we're doing. All righty. Dr. Navarro, informational items.
Yes, we have three informational items for you. Very quickly, I have a couple. First, I passed out a couple of drafts from you, that we got these from our partner, Coastline Regional Occupations. And they are a draft of a letter to senators to support an assembly bill going through that would provide dedicated funding to our CTE programs through CROP. Again, this is a very important part of our overall educational program, programs like engineering, our medical academy, our construction program, our culinary arts program, some of our animation programs, they're all supported in our partnership with CROP. And right now, they're just living off of whatever districts contribute to them. This would be a great avenue of support for them financially and add some stability to what they're able to offer their partner districts. So these are drafts. I will work with your CROP board representative, Ms. Flor, to determine whether we're going to provide you next meeting a resolution or the letter, or maybe we'll send the letter first and then the resolution based on the tracking of the bill that's going through right now, because it seems like it's got plenty of support. But again, we really need to make sure that our representatives hear from our constituents about how important it is to support all of these hands-on programs. And especially when you get to learn academics through the program itself, it really inspires kids. So that's a very important bill that's going through. We also met, had our first meeting with the, with one of the chambers. So we arranged an opportunity to lunch with Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, Steve Rozansky, about a half a dozen members who were interested in having a dialogue with us about being partners and helping us to be a better, be a better district. It was a great opportunity to share information with interested business leaders. Several of them actually are products of the district, have been around for years, have, you know, family traditions here. So two things, we did have some very good constructive informational items come in, but it was also very affirming to hear from the business leaders that they appreciated what a well-run business the district is. They had no idea that the size of our budget and really the amount of support and really focus that goes into providing students a good learning environment as well as incredible programs. programs. They thought that we no longer had programs where kids could get their hands on things and make things, and a lot of them were in an era where they got to do incredible things, like build boats. You know, so it was a very, very good meeting. We got some great advice. Former Mayor Rush Hill was there, really wonderful to hear from him, you know, his background in educational policy at the state level when he served there. And he said, you know, we talked about school safety, and he said, "You know, I think you have to harden the target," right? "And then reach out and solve the problem." So it fell in right into, A, what are we going to do to protect our campuses from being too easily accessed? And what are we doing with mental health services to take care of those kids that we know need them? So he was right, you know, he was, I actually said, "Gosh, you must have been talking to Board Member Black."
Well, you also shared our credit rating with them, too.
Yes, yes.
They never believe me, I have to prove it.
Yes, they did.
And we have a formal letter from them, from the reporting agency, saying that we do triple A rating.
Yes, yes. They were wowed by Jeff's report, and they also complimented Tim on how beautiful our schools look. They think it's really, they're really great environments for kids to go to school in, so, yeah, very, very good, a very good session. Our goal is to meet with the Costa Mesa Chamber, but the Newport Beach Chamber also recommended we meet with the real estate board members from Newport Beach. So I'm going to reach out to them and offer them a same opportunity. So, you know, modest lunch, but great, great conversation with executive cabinet, and Annette was there to provide information as well. So that was really good. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lee Sung, who's got an informational item on safety, and I think he's also going to get some information, you're going to get some information from Mr. Holcomb, who completed his tour of all the campuses with the team assessing our campuses and what we might want to do first on safety issues.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just want to again assure you that we have been working very diligently on many of our safety measures and practices. I really appreciate the cooperation that I've received from various groups that I'm meeting with, getting input, listening to, but I wanted to highlight a few areas of things that we are prepared to do, have implemented, that in this short period of time, we believe we're in a good place. The two areas that I think we've been hearing on the media, hearing from folks in our organization and in the research, is controlled access. And the other area is mental health. So these are a couple of areas that I just want to focus on tonight, and I'm going to start with the mental health resources. And we know that the more proactive that we can be, the better. And I just want to tell you that there is a commitment, with recommendation from Dr. Navarro and support from the board, that we believe adding additional psychologists in our school district will be a great plus for all of our students. And so we have made a commitment to hire four additional psychologists in our district for next year, and we just want to let you know that, and we will begin that process to bring in some top-notch psychologists to add to our already outstanding team. The other area that, again, in the same realm, is immediately addressing any potential risk and threat, and also oversee the mental health services. And we have some wonderful staff there, but in order for them to handle this more immediately, we felt we needed additional staffing in this area. So another area that we want to add a staff member is a coordinator of student services, and that would work very closely with Dr. Phil DiAgostino and Angela Castellanos. So those are a couple of areas that we feel that we can enhance our mental health and social-emotional support of our students in the district. The other area that I want to touch upon very quickly is SRO presence. And unfortunately, we all are fully aware, another school shooting, this time in Texas, and we're very proud of the fact we have four outstanding SROs, two in Costa Mesa and two in Newport Beach. But this is an area that we believe we would fully support additional SRO support in both cities. So we have to work in partnership with the two cities, but I just want to say publicly to our board and to everybody else that this is an area that we fully support and hope to get that increased staffing in SR in both cities very soon. I'll mention this, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Holcomb. We have worked very closely with both police departments to institute training for our staff, not just in lockdown procedures, which we have done for many years, but to expand that to include intruder procedures or the run, hide, fight procedures. And I'm happy to report that all of our schools have completed training in that area. Most of our schools have already conducted drills in this area, and those schools who haven't done it have scheduled to do that in the very near future. So we're very pleased to have accomplished that important step. And I also want to add that we added training here at our Bear Street facility with our staff here, so very pleased to offer that. And then finally, the controlled access to our schools is very important. I had announced to the board as one of the immediate steps that Tim Holcomb and a team would go out to visit every single school site, and they were on a very short timeline, and it's amazing, but they accomplished that. And I know that they would like to share at least some initial actions that they want to take based on their initial findings.
Thank you, Mr. Lee Sung. Yes, it's a little over a week ago that we completed our last tour of our 34 campuses that include our school sites and every site that has a district employee on it. So in doing those tours, we took the approach of inviting an architect to be part of our team so that we could act quickly and understand very clearly what the options were that might be able to be employed. As well, we also included Mr. Vlad Anderson as a consultant, who used to be one of the SROs that served the district very, very well for many years. You'll recall that the district has been at your direction, and wonderful initiative, a process of addressing the access at our elementary schools, and we have three projects that are going this summer already, where we have architects have completed drawings, and those have gone through the DSA approval process, and that work will be starting as soon as school lets out. Having these architects along for this means that for some temporary measures, we can get started very, very quickly, and they understand our sites, and they understand what we can do. So as we looked, there are some opportunities to enhance our security at our campuses, at campuses such as Newport Harbor High School, where students in passing between classes are not behind a secure perimeter. So it's our plan within the next few weeks to get a contractor started to build a secure perimeter for that campus, so that that no longer is the case. Similarly, we have some less, oh, some openings, shall we say, in some other of our high school campuses that we will be able to address very quickly as well. For example, we talked, when we did this sports project last fall, and we talked about the environmental impact report, about openings onto the Cronin Del Mar campus, and we'll be able to quickly close those openings, so that again, we have a more secure perimeter at that high school campus. Similarly, looking at the other high school campuses, and as well at our middle school campuses, our intermediate school campuses, we'll be getting some work started, for example, at Enson very soon at the entry to that school. So we're very excited about being able to get going with this, and as well to bring you a report where we can talk more about some of the things that we learned through our extensive walkthroughs of our campuses.
Mrs. Black?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, Dr. Navarro, we, the three schools that we're doing currently that are scheduled to be done for the access, but, so can we say that since Sandy Hook, that will complete all of our elementary schools, or is, are we going back around for another version?
There are layers to this, okay? So, yeah, we started at when Sandy Hook, when we, that tragedy, you know, terrible thing happened, and we made a concerted effort to fence the schools that had absolutely no fencing and provide a single access. We still have schools that need the offices redesigned. You heard that three of those schools are going to be done. So that'll get us about halfway, a little more than halfway. We have other elementary schools, we still need to reconfigure the office so that you go in one door, and then you enter the campus through another, so you can't just have open access. So we still have that project on. And then I know that in future reports, you'll learn that we have some fencing that's four feet high, and that's not acceptable. So that's, some of that will be prioritized right away to change it to eight-foot fencing, okay? First, we'll take care of these high priority schools, which have complete open access. But we need to increase the size of the fence, and there's actually this, they call it a fabric, I didn't know that until today, but the chain link is so much closer, you can't get your foot into it, so it's, that's like a wall, is basically what it's like. So there'll be some of that. Eventually, as time and design allows, we'll change the six-foot fences to either eight or 10 feet. So these immediate fences are going to provide security, but we will still go back, and Mr. Holcomb will go back, and design a more secure and attractive fence to follow. So you know the work that we did, like at Adams and Victoria and Anderson, we used decorative wrought iron fencing. This will be a chain link fence at first, and then we'll get through the plan, and so it'll be a two-stage process, but at least we'll be secure on those campuses right away.
Mrs. Flor?
Did anybody have lights about security? Because I wanted to go back to CTE.
Oh, okay, then, Mrs. Yelsey.
Did you have something else, security or CTE?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll defer.
Okay. Punch your button again.
Yeah, I just want to go back to CDM for a minute, and I know when the fields are done, and they start possibly a year from now, it's going to take another year, so we're talking a while before that's done. And this issue is so imminent, is there any way to do a more temporary fix of the perimeter?
So, the existing openings, our plan is to get out and close those immediately in the fence. So the existing perimeter fencing is not as high as what it will be in that area of the campus when we do the new project, and the intent is to go through these standards and basically raise the height of our fences throughout our campuses as we go. But it will all be behind the fence. All those openings will be closed as we do the work this summer.
I had a question, too. A lot of our, some of our campuses have access in the kindergarten areas that's different than the access for the regular ed, and they're still being held together with chain link and, I mean, chains and padlocks, and I just wondered if we were moving towards the bar release, like the front doors, front gates.
So we're looking at all of our camp, every part of, every perimeter of all of our campuses, and in particular, these three projects this summer are addressing lower-grade classrooms that are not currently behind a fence at our elementary schools, and that was a priority that was established. As Dr. Navarro mentioned, there were various phases, and this now gets us to where, at our elementary schools, all of our classrooms are behind a fence.
But that's, the pushbars at the other places are in the mix?
Yes, they're all being reviewed.
Thank you. And then, Mrs. Flor, back to CTE.
Yes, back to CTE. Couple of things. One is, time is of an essence. Currently, just to give you some background, we submitted, AB 1743 was submitted. However, in the governor's budget currently, he has allotted $212 million for CTE. However, it is being allotted to the community college with the understanding it will be passed down. And the reason for that is the former Senate Higher Education is Portatino, and he's really pushing it. So the Senate is more likely to sign the bill authorizing $212 million to go to the California Community College system, to be then transferred to the...
ROPs.
The ROPs and to the high school, the K-12. Not going to happen. Just not going to happen.
Not in reality.
And the Assembly is really, really upset about this, and they are almost unanimously opposed to that portion of the governor's budget, which is, we're waiting on that. So time is really of the essence, because the AB 1743 would allot $500,000 a year, $500 million a year to support CTE on an ongoing basis. That would be, we would all be benefiting for all of that. So what I would like to ask the board's indulgence is, because Dr. Navarro is able to operate with, you know, in the absence of a board meeting, I would really like him to be able to sign the letter, draft the letter, get it squared away. We do have a resolution that you all have, but allow him the opportunity, once this gets adjusted, it's, this is a, one of the, this resolution is, has been supported by KROP, which is the California ROCP program, that he can go ahead and, make it sure it's okay with us, and then go ahead and send it out, because the expectation is the governor's going to sign this bill, the budget, within the next couple of weeks, and so I really want to get this out before June 1st, and I'm not sure that we'll have the time. So I would really like the board to, just by consensus, we can't vote on it, but by consensus, defer to Dr. Navarro to clean the letter up and send it out to the five Assembly members.
I can read between the lines. Veronica, I'll work on this tomorrow.
And board members, do we have any objections to that happening?
No.
No, we were on.
Okay, we'll get, we'll work on it right away.
Thank you, thank you.
Perfect.
And if anybody wants to write a letter in support, we can post, maybe we can post a letter on. It's actually, we need to send it to five different individuals. That's Patrick O'Donnell, Senator, Assemblyman Anthony Rendon, Phil Ting, who is the Assembly Budget Committee, and Lorena Gonzalez, which is the Assembly Appropriations Committee, and I'll get you the...
And Kevin McCarty.
And Kevin McCarty. So I will get you those lists. I know California PTA has taken a support position, so we can get that letter out.
Well, and our principals are here, so if you don't mind, I'll be sending you a draft that you can send out to your families, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, community input, Mrs. Flor.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda, oops, sorry, wrong one, wrong one. I knew that that was. Yeah, consent agenda items or non-consent, non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per board policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a 30-minute, a 20-minute maximum for comments per topic. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board and staff or members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to the discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. Depending upon the nature of the comments, the board president or superintendent may respond, or the president may call upon board members for brief comments, questions of clarification, provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, or request the superintendent to report back to the board at a subsequent meeting concerning the matter. However, in compliance with the board policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the board, it is helpful that you state your name and address for the record. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record, and that is posted as a courtesy on our website at www.nmusd.us.
Thank you. Our first person, Rochelle Mittlader.
Good evening, all board members, Dr. Navarro, all our cabinet, all our guests this evening. I'm Rochelle Mittlader. I am the new-appointed, voted-in secretary for CSEA. So I just want to come up here and make good announcements of what we have been doing this, this week, being that it's the Classified Appreciation Week. So actually, today, the president and I actually went to 20 schools and did meet and greets, and thanked our classified members and gave out pens and information for them. We also had our CSEA open house at our office at the Harper site, and that was open to any classified members that wanted to come down. any classified members that wanted to come down. We had food, prizes, you know, get people familiar with where we are and who we are. And then we're also all looking forward to ACE Day, where we get to be, have all of you and some of our other guests shadow us. And I'm actually a participant this year, so I'm excited. And that's pretty much, I just wanted to make a good announcement of what we're doing as CSCA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, board, President Navarro. My name is Jamie Thomas. I'm here to discuss the 5-8 meeting. I had to leave early, but I watched the meeting online, and these comments actually address a deeper, ongoing issue. I was disappointed at seeing the meeting. I've worked with many different city councils and planning commissions across Southern California, and I've given many presentations to the public. It has never been okay to make argumentative comments from the dais. I personally have been berated, yelled at, cursed at by the public during meetings, and never have made snarky comments back to them. While many of us are making critical comments, they have not been disrespectful in any way. That is our job, to make comments about the concerns we have at these schools, to advocate for our children, to support our staff. It's the board's self-chosen job to listen to them. We are your constituents, not your enemies. Conversely, you are supposed to be our, meaning the entire school community's advocates, not our enemies. Insults and rude comments to your constituents should never come from the board, whether from the dais, social media, the parking lot, anywhere. This should not be tolerated by anyone. The fact that numerous people, including parents and staffs, don't want to come to these meetings to speak because they fear retribution is telling. We have a lot to be proud of in this district, and there is much to be improved, and that should be acknowledged. Additionally, I have to add, Dr. Navarro, you are wrong. You said in the last meeting that the rats are fighting for their lives. I understand the context in which you made that statement, but I have to disagree with that. Many volunteers, students, teachers may be immunocompromised, including myself, and if they're exposed to hantavirus, they will be very much fighting for their lives as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Ryland Sekus, and I'm 13 years old. I'm a seventh grader at Enson Intermediate School in Newport Beach, and recently I've been going to school knowing every day, different parts of this world, kids are being shot dead by sick and cruel people. Rather than looking at the political side of these recent school shootings, as a student, I thought the most effective way to prevent these devastating acts of hatred would be to reach out to the district and school board in search of funds to maintain safer school security. I can assure you that most of these adults in this room today never had to fear for their life attending school as a 13-year-old, as school shootings were not as common as they are today. After reading about the 10 innocent high schoolers murdered on Friday morning in Texas, I had a terrible sense of doubt and began questioning how safe my school really was. On Sunday morning, my friends and I walked around Enson, pointing out all of the possible entrances an intruder could enter the school through. Not surprised, on only half of the school campus, there were over seven ways to enter. From low fences to no fences at all, I realized that trespassing would be no problem for anyone. Close to 2,000 kids are maintained at Enson for more than seven hours daily for over 100 days of the school year, yet school security doesn't seem to be a priority for the district. I'm well aware that there are many brutally wicked people in this world, and I may not be able to change their desires to shoot innocent children, but if you choose to side with the many worried parents and students, we can in many ways change the overall security of the schools in the Newport Mesa District to prevent losing lives. I hope I've persuaded you to come to realize, along with many others, school shootings can be prevented with the help of your funds and permission. Do it for the children and put yourself in our shoes. I can assure you, if your work had been known for being intruded and shot up, you would do something to stop it and save yourself. So think about us and save us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hello, we're here on Magellan Street, not too far away from you. I'm also John Drake's former brother-in-law, so don't hold that against me. I'm here tonight to talk about school security. I'm a retired officer in the United States Marine Corps. In that capacity, I've guarded nuclear weapons. I've deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan three times. I've also sat where you've sat, not on a school board, but on a city council, so I'm no stranger to budgets and the issues that you all face. The security of our kids, my 14-year-old daughter who goes to Estancia, is in your hands. My ex-wife Susan drops her off at school. I don't think any parent should have to go to the morgue to pick their kid up at the end of the day. I'm not here to talk about mental health. I'm not here to talk about guns. I'm here to urge you to act. I know that you're studying the issue, all right? And I commend you for that, and I hope that you come up with a solid solution at the end of that. What I'm here to urge you tonight to do is to find a 50% to 60% solution that you can implement now, okay? There's, what do I mean by that? There's all kinds of qualified retired police officers, military retirees, that aren't looking for a paycheck. They would be 1099 employees so that they could make a car payment, buy a boat, go on vacation, or do something else. That would be part of the life that they've lived, serving their community, and would be more than happy to assist you that are qualified and capable in helping you. I'm not sure that you can do anything to stop these things. If you control access, if they're determined to do it, the next place you're going to see it is happen is in the parking lot. At about 7:45 in the morning, when a school is starting at 8 o'clock, you'll just shift the venue. The only thing I think the schools can do is they can mitigate it by getting somebody with a weapon there quickly and put an end to it quickly. Because I'm not sure that you can put an end to this. Money's an issue, as Flower mentioned. I urge you to be a leader in the nation in putting your hand up and saying, we need federal, state, and local funds to address this. Harbor Boulevard runs most of Orange County. When you repair it, you get federal, state, and local money to do that. I would urge you to lead, all right, in a fight for many school districts across the nation that are encountering the same issues that you are. And finally, I just want to, I've got 13 seconds. Don't, I want you, you need to act. The cruelest burden anybody in combat bears is when they fail to act, and then somebody has to pay the price for their inaction. So, thank you very much. Lead, act, and please take care of our kids.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Navarro. Dr. Navarro and trustees. Thank you for the excellent presentation on special education. That was very informative, and I'm looking forward to looking into the research that they've done. Two weeks ago, I mentioned a no-cost solution to part of a safety problem that could be solved the next morning. Nothing happened, no changes were made. Since then, there has been another shooting. When I asked if my idea was a bad idea, I asked Mr. Lee Sung. He told me that my suggestion was not a bad idea, but must be part of the comprehensive plan. My idea may not be a permanent solution, but it could be a stopgap measure, waiting for a comprehensive plan. Let's not wait. My second comment is, I want to thank the district for connecting with the success program and having Mrs. Dunlap describe the program to the school board last week. Sadly, only four people were in the audience. As far as I know, the board meeting was scheduled the Friday before with the wrong date. Mrs. Dunlap should have been invited to speak to the trustees, PTA boards, and principals of all the schools all together at one time. I am very familiar with this program and recommend that you have her speak to a larger group. You might also consider presenting the films Race to Nowhere and Beyond Measure. They both deal with the stress of youth and possible ways to assist with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Navarro?
Yes, I just want to just kind of reiterate something that was said during Mr. Lee Sung's conversation, during Mr. Holcomb's conversation. Right now, the city of Newport Beach is having a study session on increasing SROs for our district. So that's a good sign. We really want to act, and as Mr. Lee Sung said, we're ready to partner with them and increase our force and make sure that we have coverage every day and expand the coverage to our elementary schools in each zone. So that is a priority for us. I don't know if it came out very clear, but if we can close off access tomorrow with our fencing contractor, we will, okay? Again, it will be a temporary measure until we design the good-looking fence, but we really need to close off our schools. And we know about Enson. That's why it's one of our three or four schools that will be first. So I really appreciate our student who came here. She spoke so eloquently, and, you know, it just kind of hearkened back to listening to the kids from Parkland and how they spoke so clearly and so passionately. So, yeah, we are moving as quickly as we possibly can. I think we had to take the time to assess where our greatest needs were, and we're ready to move and make the improvements as quickly as humanly possible. But, you know, we have a partner in our SROs, and we want to expand that program. So our next goal is to meet with the city of Costa Mesa and see if they can also partner with us in expanding our SROs.
Mrs. Flore?
Yeah, I'm Dr. Navarro. At the Colonel Delmar Zone Pack, Mr. Lee Sung gave the safety, the similar safety that was presented to the board, which I thought was fabulous, and thank you. My understanding is that you've visited all the zones, and you've been talking to multiple PTAs, or is that part of the plan?
It's the plan if I'm invited. I'd be happy to share that message, but I understand the other zones don't have a similar zone pack. But I did convey to the parents, I'm sorry, to the principals that I'm available to come speak to staff and parents if need be.
And then you mentioned a new slogan, and that you borrowed it, but I think it's a very important slogan, which is what, you know, what our community can do in this day and age of texting. And would you like to repeat that and share that?
Sure, I have that etched in my memory. It is the phrase we've all been hearing about, see something, say something, and that's very important. But I also take the opportunity to talk about how important it is that we share information responsibly. And we, of course, as a school district, have a legal responsibility for confidentiality. We certainly like to convey that, and we will when it's appropriate. But the word that we're saying to everybody is, see something, say something. Don't spread it, report it. Because if information, we want people to come forward and report it to the police, report it to a school administrator, report it to a staff member, we can then look, immediately look into it. But sometimes, if it's spread irresponsibly, it causes more chaos, and it sometimes jeopardizes investigations that are currently going on behind the scenes with our police department and our school administrators. So see something, say something, don't spread it, report it.
Good words. Good words. And thank you to all of our speakers. Flags have been flying at half-staff way too much, way too much.
Thank you. I just, before this meeting, came back from the city council, the open part of the study session. And I can tell you that when I talked to the police chief before the meeting started, he was very optimistic about getting funding from the city for exactly what Dr. Navarro's talking about. And I used 2 minutes and 55 seconds to advocate for that, and I was happy to see the nods and the smiles, so hopefully that's a good thing. My name is Ruth Kobayashi. I'm a CDM parent, and I wanted to thank you all for engaging with Challenge Success. I was one of the people that attended the presentation last Monday, and clearly, it shows that you're making a commitment to do everything possible to create a healthy and supportive school environment for our students. Many of us who have high school students understand the ramifications of a very outdated school's calendar that our district currently uses. We are lagging behind in a very unhealthy way when it comes to that calendar. Although the reasons are plentiful for why this rather obsolete calendar does not foster a healthy environment for students, its impact was one of the first observations that the Challenge Success woman, who was really great, brought up during her presentation. She observed it at Estancia, and then she noted that that is the calendar that everyone has other than early college. Students spend their winter break, Christmas, Hanukkah, and family time with final exams hanging over them. After spending their break studying, upon returning to school, they have finals. In our family, for example, our college student this year enjoyed a relaxing winter break while our high school student had finals hanging over her. I encourage our board, our union, and all our stakeholders to put our students first in every decision and every vote. When it comes to the school calendar, our extended school community needs to truly understand what is at stake. It's what we read in the news every day. We need our students to be healthy, and it takes an entire community to make the change. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Gauntlet. I'm a parent at CDM of a junior. And I was going to mention the police issue with the Newport Beach, but Ruth has already covered it. So I basically have three things I want to cover. I want to talk first about Challenge Success. I want to thank Dr. Navarro and the board for approving the program. I think it's a great start on getting things moving in the right direction. I invite everybody in the community to go to their website and look at all the tabs, pull down the PDFs about every level of education, how important it is to certain, there's all sorts of tips. Also, I invite you all to sign up for their newsletter. I did that this afternoon, so everyone could get that as well. Second, and you mentioned Anthony Portantino on another matter, but the issue I'm here for is SB 328. It is the late-start bill. And that's another thing Challenge Success has stated, is that for middle school and high school students, starting before, starting too early is not good. And this bill starts, first period would start no earlier than 8:30 in the morning. It's currently sort of in suspense, but Anthony Portantino, if you know him, is very dynamic, and he's a dog with a bone, and he's not going to let this one go. So I also invite you to go to his website. He's a senator out of Glendale, and he's very persuasive. But basically, pushing back the school day sees an increase in attendance rates, grade point averages, and test scores as students get their full recommended amount of sleep. Sleep deprivation causes stress, and stress pretty much causes much of the issues that we're faced to today's with our students, especially in high school in this very competitive situation. So that's for that. And then also, we're 20, almost 20 years into the 21st century, and our school calendar is still stuck in the 1990s. We really need to get the calendar fixed. We need to move it so our students finish finals before the holiday break, and that they start before Labor Day, and that they're out in time. So our students who are, so many of our students in the district take AP classes. They spend their summer doing AP homework to have that first week have a test in school. That's stressful. They're not getting a break. School sports now start in August. Many of them come back in July. For instance, football, tennis, all those things, their first meets and matches are in July, in August before school starts. So it's really important, I think, that we just all get on board and change the calendar to an earlier start date. And I know this is something, I've been on the calendar committee on and off for seven years in this district, and basically, we were told four years ago, once we got air conditioning handled, this is a slam dunk. So I'm asking the unions... So I'm asking the unions for you to finally live up to this commitment and get the calendar changed, because it's really unfair to our students. And also, finally, I think the most important thing is, we need to remember that our students are our customers of this district. It's not the parents, the teachers, the administrators, you guys. It's all about them. It's our kids, and we really need to think about them in the future, because they're the main event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Edward Jacobs?
Board of Directors, Dr. Navarro, distinguished guests. My name is Edward Jacobs. I am a graduating senior at Corona Del Mar High School. And I spoke at this committee a few months ago to discuss the same topic regarding the school calendar. I've actually been in a pretty fascinating position in that I've been able to see both sides of what a school calendar can do to a community's mental health. On the one hand, I pride myself on trying to do my best at school, and so to that end, I've done my best to take as many exams as I thought would be able to further my own academic interests. At the same time, however, as some of you may have heard, the Corona Del Mar community this year has gone through a pretty big self-reflection in terms of what mental health means to us and what testing and especially unrealistic calendars, which exacerbate the stress around testing, can do to stress out a community, often to the point of great communal discord. I'm here today to ask you to consider changing the calendar, not just because of the selfish needs of a senior who would like the calendar to align more with the college schedule in the fall, but also to take into consideration what it means for a student, especially as they go through the later years of high school, to take on much more of a workload. And when you are having finals being placed at the end of January, and then you're having your AP tests at the end of May, you have an extra month left at the end, where all these students are basically left to do more or less nothing. The trade-off for that is that the time that you're losing at the beginning of the year is piling on in terms of the amount of cramming that students have to go through, the amount of stress that they have to deal with. And as one of the previous speakers mentioned, that there is an additional cloud of stress that they have to deal with over their holiday breaks because they have these finals, which are just over the horizon. And this is causing, to a great extent, a sense of stress among the community. An anecdotal example is, this year I was in AP Seminar, which is a class designed for sophomores, but because it is the first year which it is offered, I was also in the course. And seeing the sophomores, especially because they're getting used to kind of the rhythm of high school, deal with not only the events earlier this year, but also having to deal with finals, which are after winter break, and having to deal with a much larger workload than would be expected of their younger peers, it was fascinating to see how many of them were looking for that kind of breathing room in order to space out their study schedules and also to be able to prepare for their exams. In conclusion, I firmly believe, from the position of someone who's seen both academic tryhards and also those who would like more space to study and take time in order to perfect their academic careers, that we take on this new calendar, because I believe it will greatly help the mental health and community of Corona Del Mar, but also Newport Mesa at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marla Gladman?
My name is Marla Gladman. I am a parent in the Newport Mesa School District, specifically currently Corona Del Mar High School. And I am here to ask you to consider the collegiate calendar for the help in making the mental health of our children better. The stress of having to study all summer is enormous, and then the kids have to end six weeks after APs and literally six weeks of nothing. And the problem with ending so late is our kids in our district have trouble getting jobs in the summer, because the kids who are done in May get those jobs. And then they also have trouble getting their transcripts to the colleges in time when they graduate. My son will be starting college in the fall, and I had to call the college and let them know that his transcript will be late and to please not rescind his acceptance. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Armin Roshanai?
My name is Armon Roshanai. I am a junior at Corona Del Mar High School, and I'm here representing CDM Speech and Debate as well as Youth and Government. I was going to talk about some of the issues that I've heard in the community about this collegiate calendar, but I'm actually going to deviate from what I was planning on speaking on and rather talk about a fundamental shift in our perception of this calendar over the past few months, especially at CDM. With the recent events that have occurred at CDM, I think it's very clear to all of us that there's a fundamental problem regarding our academic climate at Corona Del Mar High School, as well as the district in general. I believe that to help aid this problem that we have seen and to help bridge this gap between students who are trying to push themselves academically and really extend themselves, and students who are really having struggles doing so, I believe to do so, it would be best to instate this collegiate calendar. By doing so, we would actually give students about one extra month of studying for their exams. And I know that, for me personally, I was taking numerous exams this year, I could tell that we were crunched on time. Other students on the East Coast are having an extra month to study for these while I'm cramming last minute. And then now, after being done with my exam, I have ample time in class to do nothing. I think we're really missing out on a great opportunity to help our students improve their scores and, more importantly, increase their mental and emotional stability and increase their mental and emotional health. My sister right now is 12 years old. She's in sixth grade, and I know that next year she will be attending CDM. I don't want her going through what students are going through right now. I love her more than anything, and I want to make sure that she has ample time to express herself in high school and make sure that she is emotionally and mentally stable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Navarro?
You know, I don't think there are many issues that are as student-centered as this issue, and I really appreciate our parents and our students coming by. This is something that Challenge Success brought to our attention. No one knew about Challenge Success until recently, but I've read the research. Research is very clear, and we need to focus on our students. That's what this is all about. I agree.
Me too. Thank you. Mrs. Flor, Consent Calendar.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the Consent Calendars for Business, Education Services, Human Resources, Student Support Services, and the Superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the Consent Calendar.
Move to approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Discussion.
Oh, wait, but something listed that we, okay.
Discussion Action Calendar.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to?
If you want.
Don't we move in second and then talk?
No.
Okay.
But you can.
You can if you want.
No.
You want to put it on the?
But let's find out.
You want me to move approval and then direct it over to Dr. Navarro?
Sure.
Okay, move approval of the additions to the high school, middle school course of study. Very exciting stuff. We're over 14 of them.
Yes. Okay. It was moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Black. This is so much neat stuff. We'd like to have some elaboration.
This was actually fun reading.
It was fun reading.
Good. Well, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Fun himself, Mr. John Drake. I kept thinking of you when we were reading this over the weekend, going, ooh.
Yes, very exciting stuff. Vice President, Metoyer, Board, Dr. Navarro. Before you this evening are 26 courses on our list of course of studies. Having read them, I see over 16 of those are rewrites. We'll explain that. And then there are 10 others, and out of those 10, there are only three that are courses not aligned or affiliated with our CTE pathways, which I think speaks loudly to our commitment to really giving kids an opportunity to be college and career-ready as they exit our system. I do have principals here who can speak to any of the specific details of the courses at their sites, but just to talk a little bit about the rewrites. If you recall, in the fall, you approved some support of consultation to look at our CTE pathways, and I think that's an important aspect of really the direction we're going in CTE, which is pathways. Courses that sequentially build on each other to exit students to actually be college and/or career-ready with potential free and certification in some of these trades. The course rewrites really incorporate that idea of college and career, because we went back and not only updated the trade aspects of the courses, but we also incorporated all those standards of our core areas that would be impacting those courses. An enormous amount of work was done to get these ready by both our principals, their teachers, with support of the CTE office. So I'm excited to put these before you tonight for approval.
Buttons? Okay, I was just going to say before I, I have to wait. I can't put my own button on it. Go ahead.
I am very excited, particularly from the standpoint of the number of middle school programs that we are going to be and classes we are going to be offering. And there are some rewrites, yes, but we have application creators or app creators, green architecture.
AP research.
AP research. And I think it's particularly interesting that, and that we are sequential, and it's very important that, because that's part of our LCAP is that, and required, is that they have at the end, there's an end to it. There's a capstone exam, there's a capstone certificate, so that they can either matriculate into the community college, or they can go on to another certificate, certificated program. I also want to issue a caution that I'm hoping that we can bring, bringing back some of the visual and performing arts and the arts career pathways to take a look at that, also service industries. These are very heavily STEM-related, and I would like to make sure that we are also offering opportunities in law, for example, or in culinary. I mean, we do have a fabulous culinary program, but again, I think it's really important that we have well-rounded, and so with 26 career pathways in really in STEM, I would hope that we would move towards some programs that are more, you know, there are kids that are going to want to be lawyers, there are kids that want to be business people, there are kids that want to do other items and be in the arts, for example. And so, please, I'm hoping that you will encourage and start looking for some of those programs, too, especially in light of our fabulous art program. We have phenomenal drama, we have phenomenal classes.
Oh.
And that, so, so that's it. I'm just thrilled. Thank you.
Mrs. Yelsey?
Yeah, I just want to say first of all, I feel a little bit bad, because this item was originally going to be on our Consent Calendar.
Oh, yeah.
And I was at agenda prep, and I got really excited because of all the wonderful courses that are on here, but including the first time Corona Del Mar will have a CTE pathway.
Yes.
And so that's when we put it on. And the reason I feel badly is I know the principals wouldn't have had to be here. We had had to consent, and I know you have a lot of other things going on.
Wouldn't you like to talk about?
So my apologies for that, but it is really exciting, and I just wanted to point out that having Corona Del Mar on the CTE pathway, I think, is fabulous.
I think we ought to have them all come up and say a few words.
Yeah, I mean, really, they're here.
They're here!
That's right. I've got questions, so that'll be. Mrs. Black?
Yeah, I just can't help myself. I, you know, I was looking at AP, you know, research, and I, you know, encourage the community to, they'll be online eventually, right? Because they're, it's just, I wish I had that in high school. I mean, this is high school stuff, aerospace, you know, Costa Mesa High, I mean, all of them are just exciting. I mean, I get the chills, because we, when Dr. Navarro first met with the board, the very first time he ever met with all of us in a team, I just said, you know, we really need to get the relevance. And this is, you know, I think what helps our students get excited, you know, about school, instead of, okay, take out pen and paper, or take out your laptop, or take out your cellphone. They're actually collaboratively working together, you know, in something that, you know, that's tangible to them, and I believe that will help. So I'm very excited. I know, I also read Jeff Trader's, you know, Budget, page to page, but it's fascinating to me, because as a layperson, you know, I had no idea, and so the rewrites are just amazing. Compared to what we had before, unbelievable difference. I mean, these are like college courses when I was in school.
And I have two questions, and I can go right after you. First, app creations at T-Winkle. All I could think of was, they'll be able to make money by the end of the course before they even get into high school. Am I right? They're creating little app, they're figuring out the coding that's required to create an app.
Paul, can you come up to the mic? Otherwise, we won't be able to record you.
The intent is that they will definitely make money in middle school, creating these apps. You know, technology is such a big part of our students' lives, and especially with cell phones these days, and so we might as well use them in a positive way and encourage our students to be creating these apps early on and get them interested in how and how they can, it could benefit them, what they can potentially get out of it, and so really using what the students' interests are, and then also tapping into that educational piece at the same time. I think that's a powerful tool for our kiddos.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's exciting. And then my other question, you could, yeah, Judd, this is for, this is Scott. AP research. I have questions, so you're going to have to answer me. I'm sorry, but it's figured, hey, Alicia waited this long. You can say something.
That's right.
Make it meaningful. From what I was reading, this is a course to teach and assist children in learning how to do the research that's needed for the reports later. It was attached to Global Studies, so.
Correct.
Would you clarify that?
Yes, so let me clarify. So this course is a part of our Academy of Global Studies, so, and I do agree, Ms. Flor, with your comment about not just STEM courses, and so I think many of us at the high schools have other academies that, so Academy of Global Studies does address more that law, international business type component. So AP research is a part two of another course called AP Seminar that you approved last year. So AP Seminar, the students actually learn to read research papers and evaluate them and critique their evidence and their statement and their claims and the arguments that they're proposing. Then AP research is actually the hands-on, they have to come up with a sort of an international dilemma that they're, they will do a research project on and develop their research and their data and put together their research paper by the end of their junior year and make a presentation. That's part of the course requirement. It's also going to partner with their senior project. So our senior project committee at Corona Del Mar has allowed the AP research students, because we're just, we'll be talking about 35 students, that that will be their senior project, you know, getting it done in their junior, because it's so involved and intensive.
Thereby eliminating some stress that they have to add a senior project on top of doing this massive project.
Correct.
That was one of my questions. And poor Edward, he won't be able to take this, because he's graduating.
No, he was very disappointed.
Anyway, thank you so much. You answered a couple of my questions.
Thank you.
Perfect. Well done, everyone. That's pretty amazing. Another night. Sorry, Mrs. Flor.
Because I wanted to ask a couple of questions besides my comments. One is, and this is for all the principals, because my assumption is, once it's approved at one site, it can be approved, every site can use it. Is that not, is that correct? So hopefully, that will, that will allow. So that begs the greater question about how some of these, how some of these courses, for example, the construction technology course, has been allowed, that we've had some students matriculate from other schools for a specific course. Is that something that it might, might, not now, might be considered for some of these courses if appropriate? That a student could in fact, depending on their class schedule, is that something that could in fact be done? And then, so I'll let you answer that one first, Michael.
Yeah, to answer that question.
Yeah, to answer that question, and I think the operative word is might, but that's something that we're exploring, because out of the gate, the construction tech program is great with respect to the facility, the teacher, there is an efficiency to it to allow the students, and we work together on the scheduling of it. We've got, with the eight-period block, we've got more latitude and flexibility, so there's a lot more possibility, I'm saying, with that, to explore other pathways offered at a single school that would be open to all students. So we're definitely talking about that.
And that, so that's one question. Two, this is in addition to, I'm assuming, these are, these are being funded through our CTIG, through our, through our general fund in terms of curriculum and design. This does not include some of the...
Yeah, three sources, Perkins, our CTE IG grant, and also ROP's CTE IG grant earmarked for our school. So those are the three sources.
Okay. And then finally, in regards to the middle school program, so is that the same intent that ones there, they're one at the middle school, that they could be transferred, the kids could be transferred over? I mean, the class could be potentially at other middle schools?
Only if you drive up.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about students, I'm talking about the courses. Can, the, that, the app creator that's going to be developed at T-Winkle could in fact, because it's an approved course now, could in fact, if a teacher wanted to do it at Enson, or at Corona Del Mar, or at Costa Mesa, it's set up so that all it is, is recruiting, sort of recruiting a teacher, or...
Correct. And any school, once it's adopted, any other school can adopt it.
A classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question. DePauli, can I audit that class?
No kidding.
I might need some intervention.
That's so cool. So very cool. So very cool. I really thank, you know, thank everybody for taking, you know, CTE to the next level.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. You can go. You can leave now. Thank you so much. Board member reports. Mrs. Yelsey.
Okay, thank you. It is that time of year.
It is.
And we started off, some of us were at the DAR Awards last week, I believe that was. And students from elementary schools, all the way up to high schools, received awards at this ceremony. But I wanted to single out two of our seniors, Zach Gladman and Stephanie Garcia. Zach is from CDM, Stephanie's from Newport Harbor, who received the Colonel William Cabell Chapter Scholarship. And that's very special in both of them. I know, I'm sorry, Zach's mom was here speaking before, but I was gonna congratulate her. So that was a wonderful, wonderful program. And then a couple of us were at the Early College High School Awards last week, where Alex, like, ran away, ran away with a pot there. It was, it was pretty impressive, but all the students, it was so nice seeing them when they got awards, when someone's name was announced, the kids went crazy. I mean, all of them, not just kids receiving, the audience was just so excited for all of them, and that was wonderful to see. And it, one, I guess the most exciting thing I did last week was go to the volleyball game on Saturday between CDM and Newport Harbor. And this was at Cerritos College, which is a large venue, and it was standing room only. I don't even think everybody could get in there. What was really nice is the crowds on both sides were very respectful, they cheered really loud, but I didn't see any disciplinary things going on. So it was great. And, I mean, we're talking really high-level competition here. In fact, I got my daughter to go with me, and I said, "They're really good, you'll like it." And she, she was not disappointed. So it was, it was very exciting, and good luck to both of them as they go on to the regionals, as they are doing now. Once again, I won't talk about Chalm's success too much, but it was a great presentation with Margaret Dunlap here, and people say she should come back and speak to everybody and that type of thing. She came after she had gone to Estancia that morning. She was here specifically for that meeting and postponed her plane two hours to speak to us. That's why we had it on a Monday morning. We don't always plan meetings like that, but we were planning around her schedule. She can't be here. And then Mrs. Flor already mentioned Zonpak. Mr. Lee Sung gave a wonderful presentation on safety to the, this is a group of all the principals in the, it was in the Corona Del Mar Zone, and all the PTA presidents, so there were in-going and outgoing, so there were quite a large number of people there. And everyone really appreciated that. So thank you again, and I'm sure every other zone would love to have you in some capacity.
Figure out a way to do that.
Yeah.
Miss, well, they wrote to everything, 'cause it was really wonderful, but one of the things that Principal shared at Early College High School about our, you know, Alex, was that she, she wrote to everything.
Yeah.
And continued, yeah.
She applied.
She applied. She applied for everything and kept applying, you know, so, you know, he really stressed that point across. So now I know all these parents and the poor siblings, you know, are now having to apply to everybody, but it was worth it. So also, Mrs. Flor and I just got back from Sacramento, where we serve as delegates in Orange County, all but a few schools from the entire Orange County area were there. We collaborated on safety, you know, for two days. We talked about, probably that was the biggest issue at the very beginning, you know, was everybody wanted to talk about that. And mental health came up, you know, as a big priority. Lots, the school districts were sharing with us that, about the same things that we're doing, what we're faced with, you know, throughout California. And, but the mental health, I think, probably, you know, was the biggest issue, is how to get our arms around that. A lot of them are doing the same thing, hiring more psychologists now. The cities and counties are working with them to really bring sheriffs or the SROs in, you know, so it's definitely mainstream, you know, concern. But just being able to talk with the 27 representatives from Orange County there were, you know, was pretty, I think, you know, Russell probably would have enjoyed being there because they've been doing all this research, and so we were sharing that. And then the fair and equal funding, and so we learned about that. And again, and I've been serving on the board 20 years, and I think Mrs. Flor and Ms. Franco and I have been going there, meeting with legislators, asking for the same thing, and looking at the budget, and everybody's celebrating, you know, the governor's budget, and basically, he's just repaying what he's already, you know, not he personally, but over the last 10 years, what he's already taken, so. So we talked about that, and usually Newport Mesa or Basic Aid Districts, we're kinda quiet, because, you know, we're not in the same boat as them, but for, we're down, we've now moved up from 47th in the nation per student spending to 43 now, so yippee skippy, you know, and...
Forty-three with a bullet.
Yeah. So lots of discussion about that, and this is our second year on it, so they're getting ready to launch and bring the data in, they're looking at teacher, you know, concern about being able to get enough teachers into our schools, and the disparity of K in different, you know, districts, and cutting programs, like probably half of the districts in my breakout group have cut programs and have not had raises either. And so it was really devastating to hear that. And now they're, you know, with the, being, you know, saddled with the pension, and then now security. And how do they do that? And some of them had air conditioning issues too, so, but it was, you know, you can just say, and it's just not a good formula for bringing people together. It's pitting people against each other, and quite frankly, the focus needs to be on the students, and that's, you know, basically the highest and best priority. And that's what such a, you know, great, you know, opportunity to come together with everyone, because that's really the focus. So it's been really, really terrific, and I'm sure Mrs. Flor will have more, 'cause she got to sit at the front of the room, as she's past president, and we were in the back, as usual. But we have a good group, so it was good.
No report.
Mrs. Flor?
Yes, as Mrs. Black said, it was, that was, it was quite enjoyable, I did attend the DAR, but going back to Delegate Assembly, I think we really have to pay attention because Basic Aid will be in jeopardy, significant jeopardy, to the point where it may end up somehow eliminated. Because what they're fighting for is fair and full funding, and getting us to the national average, which is what we are, which means, and one of, yeah, what we are. But one of the, one of the things that they're looking at in terms of the legislature and the legislative analysts is talking about, well, there's a couple of major initiatives that are going to be on the ballot, I mean, either in 2018. One, which is, is a big concern for school districts, is the proposition that's going to allow you as a 55, a senior to transfer.
Prop 13 taxes.
Right now, you get the, you get the Prop 13, you get that homeowner's Prop 13 that you can transfer.
It's called Prop 60.
You can take it one time, there's a proposition that will be on the ballot that will allow you to transfer it forever, anytime you move, A, and it's not limited within your county. So you're able to transfer it, you can go to one county, do it the other, and it's still going to count. Which means that, for those 55 or older, that's a huge drop in revenue for schools and cities. Because, and while the revenue limit districts will be able to be backfilled, in other words, the state will say, "Well, you know what, you lost this money, but we can backfill you to make you whole again."
From the general fund.
From the general, that's not what occurs in Basic Aid, because Basic Aid right now says, "Well, you get to keep your excess." Well, if there's no excess, there is no way to backfill, so it could be a significant drain on Basic Aid, so we'll have to watch that one. So please, we'll keep you informed. The interesting thing is, the marijuana, is they asked a question about whether, how marijuana the new initiative has impacted. Some districts haven't, it hasn't been, a lot of, majority of school districts in California are K, six school districts, and so they're not seeing it, and so they're going, "Oh my goodness." And as one, I was sharing with some of my colleagues over dinner, I was saying, "One school district in Butte County says, 'Well, we really haven't seen a major issue.'" But again, we don't have our parents sending the marijuana to school with their children to sell. They now have an outlet. Excuse me? I mean, I'm going, "Are you kidding me?"
Good to know for Butte County.
Are you kidding me? So that was, that was kind of interesting. And then in some of the breakouts, the discussion about safety, it's such an overarching issue that we have to separate safety and security, because most, you know, when you talk about safety, there's bullying can be in that, there's school climate, there's, you know, mental health, there's a lot of issues in regards to school safety. So when we're tackling it, we're tackling all of it, which is a huge umbrella. When we're talking about securing our schools and having controlled access, that's really about security. How do we secure ours? But again, that also involves, because as we've tragically seen, many of the shootings today are from people inside our buildings, and that's why it's so very important that we expand our mental health, and so I'm really appreciative of that. So those are the two. I wanted to remind everybody that the student, distinguished students for ROP, is this 24th, we are entering into it. I'm very appreciative, the principals are not here anymore, but very appreciative of the principals. All of our high school graduations for the public will be on one day, and our middle schools are on the previous day. So that will be, I think that'll be a great, a great addition, as well as two of our schools, Enson, thank you, thank you, to Mike Shaka, and Corona Del Mar, Becky Gogel, they will be held on the high school campus, which will be wonderful for our parents to be able to actually see their students. And the students will have a wonderful venue at Newport Harbor High School to see, to see them, so that's great.
Mrs. Black?
You know, I just wanted to just comment real quick on the speaker regarding the federal funding. So we have, we did meet in a caucus about putting more pressure on the federal government, and also the state in the collaboration to help fund the safety, because, like I said, you know, we've been working on it since Sandy Hook, and, you know, but, and it's been millions that we have spent, millions. And, but we, and we get no relief, you know, from the federal government. So that was a huge topic, and it was one of the biggest concerns, but they're moving forward, and we're sending it, you know, through our advocates and to Washington DC. But they seem to be open to hearing, when you talk about safety, they just don't want us to take their guns away. That's the only, and really, that's the topic, that, you know, people were saying, "What are we doing with the guns?", you know? So anyway, I just wanted to reassure you that that is something that we're doing.
Okay. Since the last board meeting, a lot of our, many of our high schools, secondary schools, in order to bring parents in and reassure them and get feedback, will have coffee with the principals. And I was able to attend the Costa Mesa High School coffee with the principal on May 9th, and it is a wonderful opportunity out in the community, if you get a chance and can squeeze it into your schedule, because you're in a much more intimate situation, and you can ask those questions that you feel get lost, because it's a big ginormous hole that you feel like your questions get answered. And so it was really an opportunity to hear that, to participate, and because there was something going on in the, AP testing was going on in the library, we met in the middle school enclave, and we decided as a group that we would stay there during their nutrition break, because how better could we embarrass our children without having moms sitting with the principal, and they could wonder what we were talking about? So that was, it was fun. I was able, I was asked to go over to College Park and help them celebrate their nurse, Natalie Gertis, who was awarded the Orange County Nurses Association Nurse of the Year Award, so that was exciting. And the cheer that went up from every single student was just heartwarming. And then they asked me to help pass out the pins for the longevity, and 25 years, oh my! So it was, that was always fun to do. And then I was able to go to Costa Mesa High School Mustangs Field for the Special Olympic Soccer Tournament, Newport Mesa Variety. Oh my gosh. Brought me back to my days of being the soccer mom of swarm ball, where it goes back and forth, but we had some really good soccer players this year, it's the third annual, and if you get a chance next year, it's really fun. And thank you to Dr. DiAustino, because not only was he there, but he coaches. So he had a team that he was coaching on, and they did very well, so go Little Feet. And then finally, on last week, last Friday night, I was able to attend the Costa Mesa Mayor's Art of Leadership Event.
Congratulations.
And it's an annual event that is predawned by the Chamber of Commerce for the mayor to honor the arts, and our Estancia and Costa Mesa High Schools directly benefit from that, as well as Sigurdstrom Art Program, some art programs, and I'm...
Sigurdstrom Center, South Coast Prep.
And it was a delightful event from the very beginning, because the Estancia String Quintet played as the networking and hors d'oeuvres were being passed, and you had that beautiful violin and string music going on in the background. Then we went into the main dinner place, and the Costa Mesa Jazz Band, and while I am biased, they have good jazz bands. And so they were playing, and then to further entertain us during dinner, the madrigals sang, and then the madrigals went off, and a couple featured madrigal singers sang with the jazz band, so they were treated wonderfully. And I have a letter here from Charlene Ashendorf, she asked me to read it at the board meeting, it's not long. And it was, the subject line was "Beyond Gratitude." Dear Trustee Metoyer, I was deeply touched with gratitude and appreciation to have your support at the Art of Leadership Mayor's Celebration last week. Having you there meant so much to Dennis and me. How humbling to share recognition with former chief Snowden, Costa Mesa Police Department, and the Ursini family, Newport Rib, for those of you that don't know... and the Ursini family, Newport Rib, for those of you that don't know, along with a remembrance for Brad Long. What a night for Costa Mesa. Of course, it was a perfect night. It was a night where I was especially filled with pride to call Costa Mesa home, which was exemplified with the performances and works of art from our students. Shar, please share thanks with Dr. Navarro, Costa Mesa High School Principal Jake Haley, and Estancia High School Principal Michael Halt for their support. Shout-outs go to Stacy Nieto, Christine Otto, Allison Rockwood at Estancia, and Kirby Piazza, John Lindforz, Jerry Willhite, Sandy Gilbo, Kelly Marchbank, and Jackie Ames at Mesa. Just, they had students that were actually doing artwork, painting and sculpting in the lobbies also. Most deserving praise, accolades, and thanks for spreading joy and laughter and cheers and great entertainment to our Costa Mesa students. Guests and supporters of the evening's event were so impressed and engaged by these talented students. Thank you from my heart. And Charlene received the Art of Giving Back Award. And if you know her, that's what she does. She can't help herself, she does it when she doesn't even realize she's doing it. And she had this fabulous poem that she read in appreciation. So I, I definitely wanted to share that and say what a wonderful event it was. It was very personal feeling this year. It's, it takes a different tone each time, we have a different mayor, and it was, it was a wonderful event. And at, with that, Board Committee reports?
I do have a report.
Of course you do.
Of course I do. Couple of things of note. One is, I've already spoken about 1743, so I won't say anything about that, but interestingly, Steve Gleyer, who was our Director of CTE here in our district, he left and now is, he went to work for the community colleges and now is doing consulting work for the Orange County Department of Ed. And he's leading a project, which is so very exciting, called the Community, California Community College Strong Workforce Program. And it's the vision of this program that any student who enrolls in a second CTE course in a pathway, they will receive information about the field, the labor market, and the options at the community colleges. So this information would go, also go to their parents, the CTE teachers, the counselors, so that if a kid registers for a class in a, in a CTE, they'll get information about that pathway, the courses that might be offered at the community college and beyond in that pathway. And it's a, it's a computerized program, so it'll sort of help, help counselors and everybody do that. So we're very excited about that. Also, one, they, you all were talking about some of the programs and how gratifying it is in that the CTE. We received a letter from, and we always get, we get wonderful letters from former students. Well, we had a student that was not ours, who took two in bell-scheduled CTE courses at Fountain Valley High School, and then he did an after-school program. He did one on radiology and a second one on an internship. Well, he has now been accepted, went to, it's called Baylor College in Florida, and, or Bailey College in Florida, and he has now been accepted to a master's program in microbiology research. And all because he took introductory classes, CTE classes, and he credits the CTE for providing him the opportunity to gain some experience, explore his passions, and then move on and complete those, and then get a leg up into admission into college to go on. And now he's, he's been accepted, full ride scholarship, masters in microbio, microbiology something, so.
Yeah.
Pretty exciting stuff.
Lots of big words.
Lots of big words.
I, I did also find out, and I don't know if I'm stealing anyone's thunder on that, oh, good. We had five schools in Newport Mesa that were selected to be California Honor Roll Schools. Costa Mesa High School, Early College High School, as our board rep mentioned, Pollarino Elementary, Killibrook Elementary, and California School. So, yeah, as I said, woo, woo, very exciting.
Honor Roll, that's not the News and World Report one?
No, it's not, not the US News and World Report. It's the CB, California Business Educator, Education, something or other, CBEE, and there's another set of.
C-C-B-E?
No, C-B-E-E. And then there were, there was another, I, thank you, ERP, I couldn't remember the other letter. See, you have to have resources, that's what's really good. And it's a big deal. This is an independent group of business people and researchers who, in the state of California, picked schools that they feel have made significant improvement in their school, and they give you this award. You don't apply for it, you don't even know they're even looking at you, and you.
Terrific.
You get kudos, so we will equal those kudos. I'll see your kudos and I'll raise you more kudos. So good, good job, California, since you're not here today. You're here to represent, thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Navarro.
Okay.
Report informally.
Informal.
Informal reports.
You know, I've been thinking about all the comments that were made today about safety and stress for our students, and I think some of these board members remember that when it came to secure campus, I didn't take any prisoners. You'll remember those phone calls from the time that I didn't let kids leave campus when they didn't have a permit for, for lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a line about 200 deep, and, you know, Kirk was a brand-new AP, and I mean, and he didn't quit. And then, you know, we didn't let anybody on campus after the tardy bell rang. And so if you were late as a kid, you had to park your car in the student parking lot, walk on the fairview and all the way to the front door, and then we had a nice conversation about being on time with each one of them, every one of them. And you know, and, and you know, you got a ton of phone calls, and you do, you do these things because, not because there's glory in it, there were a lot of parents that were really, really unhappy. But we have an obligation to not worry about ourselves, to not do things for ourselves. We have an obligation to do what's right, and that sometimes means doing things that aren't popular. I mean, I don't like taking my shoes off when I go to the airport, but I understand why. And, you know, tonight, we heard about safety, and, and we heard about stress at our, at our schools. And there are a bunch of leaders in here, whether they're administrative leaders or teacher leaders or work for an employee group. You know, as leaders, we need to do what we need to do. We need to do everything we can to remove the stress for our students. I don't, I don't want to hear about another kid taking his life because of stress. And I don't want to have a shooting on any of our campuses. So everyone in here needs to make the decision. These decisions aren't about us, they're about our kids, and we need to make that decision and do everything we can.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro.
Absolutely. I concur. But I do have just a couple of things tonight. One is, I do want to congratulate CSCA. I was, had the opportunity to attend the open house, Rochelle, and it was, it was just very well received by their members. It was good to see, to be invited to their place of business and to see how they operate and work together and the services that they provide for their members. So that was an enjoyable event. The other thing that I wanted just to share is my own congratulations to all of our superstars tonight. When we can recognize people, that's, that's exciting to do, and you didn't hear Kristen say it, she thanks everybody else, but I really do want to make a point of thanking her with coordinating all of it, the effort that she takes to ensure that the, the recipients, there's a quality statement and really depth to what we say about them, so that we all get a sense of their accomplishments and what they bring to our students and our communities. And so I do thank her, as well as Viester Caldwell, who assists with the reception. So a little bit behind the scenes, but certainly appreciative of the work that they do.
That's great.
No report.
It was good to hear about some of your deliberations with your counterparts about the budget and those kinds of things, and it is, we'll bring a budget to you next week for you to take, take a look at, and.
Oh, joy.
It's mostly, mostly good news, but you know, you are, you're tackling some really substantial issues, and you'll see that reflected in your budget. When you look at the changing dynamic with safety and security and with air conditioning and other high-profile facility projects you're working on, and then with, you know, multiple curriculum adoptions, you're going to see that kind of impact on, on the budget. But overall, it'd be, just to force out, it'll be great, it'll be good.
Resolvent, moving forward.
That's right.
Just real quick, I want to recognize the Newport Exchange Club for putting together a fantastic day last Friday with the Field of Honor. They had 1,776 American flags spread throughout Castaways Park, and it was a day to celebrate armed, our armed forces and recognize the women and men who have served and currently serve in our armed forces. We had just under 800 elementary students attend the event, which was fantastic, and I really want to take a couple of seconds just to recognize Janine Jones and also Nick St. Royale for doing a fantastic job of entertaining the crowd. And of course, wherever we have our music teachers, we can't forget about Scott Fitzpatrick. He did a great job of organizing really the entire event. He works very closely with the Exchange Club, and he did a fantastic job. So it was a nice, very nice day. Time to really take some pride and recognize those, those people who are fighting for and protecting our country.
And the flags are still up.
They'll be up all weekend.
Right.
I too just have a couple of recognitions. You saw the, all of the secondary principals here this evening, and not just secondary principals, but even going down to our elementary. We have an amazing group of leaders at our sites who are doing great work, and a lot of it. And I just want to recognize them for that. We've, you know, we've pushed them and asked them to come in and do some things to help us get things moving. So just want to recognize that. Along the same lines, Kathleen Leary, who's our Director of Early Childhood Programs, always reminds me that I'm not just the Director of K-12 Curriculum Instruction, but PK-12 Curriculum Instruction. But shout-out to her in that she's been selected to be on the Orange County Child Care and Development Council. Not a surprise, and it'll be probably a matter of weeks before she's running it.
Yeah.
She, she does amazing work. And obviously, with some of the transitions and changes for the next couple of months in, in our department, I really need to thank Dr. Sir, Dr. Bauermeister, Vanessa Gailey, Kathleen, they've really picked up things and are continuing to move them along. I know Kurt, Vanessa, and Kathleen, along with several teachers and administrators, had this whole room covered in chart paper about a week ago as they were grinding through some discussions around report cards in the elementary level and making some revisions there, along with all the other work they're, they're doing. So we're moving things forward and just grateful to be part of an awesome team.
Michelle from CSCA mentioned earlier about ACE Day coming up on Thursday. And when I first got the invitation, I, my first reaction was, no, I am laser-like focused on safety. And then I came up with an idea. If I could do a shadow with one of our safe, school safety facilitators, I'm in. So I'm in for Thursday. I'll be shadowing our school safety facilitator over at T-Winkle. I will enjoy a couple of hours doing that, but keeping my focus and urgency on safety.
I'm going to run you over because I'm doing buses again.
Oh, no.
They won't let you do the forklift again, will they, Martha?
No, they won't. We still can't do that one yet.
So as was mentioned earlier, we did have our Special Olympics Soccer Event last Friday, and there's a big thank you that goes out to the Costa Mesa students. Their band was out there, they have their cheerleaders out there, and then they also have their students who come and sit in the stands and cheer our kids on. And then we, it was very windy when we started the day, so we had some students out there helping to hold the goals up so they wouldn't collapse on us. So, you know, it's, it's always a nice event, and I think that, that everyone gets something out of it. I always get choked up when they're, like, the kids are walking through and everybody's cheering for them, my mind's like, oh, it's okay. So in case you missed it and you, you need that, that little extra heart tug, this coming Friday at Estancia High School, we have our young athletes, or what I like to call our Controlled Chaos Group, that are doing lots of little different activities. And we're going to start at 10:00, and we needed to do that because of our busing situation to make sure we can get all of our athletes there. So it's going to be another great morning, and we'd love to see anybody there who can come out and cheer us on.
Terrific. Alrighty. Okay, I made it through.
Move adjourned?
I did. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. It was moved by Mrs. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey, all those in favor of adjournings.
Hi.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you.